It is Wednesday, September 10th, 2025. Call to order our regular meeting. One flag one roll call.
Chris Castillo.
Here.
Harry Friend.
Here.
Daniel Pewett.
Here.
Gretchen Ross.
Here.
And Peter Schuler.
Here.
Everyone is present.
One point two approval of the agenda.
Staff recommends approval of the agenda.
Thank you for the approval.
All second.
Any further discussion?
Trustee Schuler. Trustee Pewett.
Aye.
Trustee Castillo.
Aye.
Trustee Ross.
Aye.
Trustee Friend.
Aye.
Mo- motion passes five zero.
Uh, one point three public comment for closed session items. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we are going out of close, we're going into closed session.
Closed session.
Alrighty, reconvene, open session, and first up, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, three point two Gretchen, report on closed session agenda items.
Uh, the board unanimously accepted the um, the personnel document uh with uh one change.
Alright, uh, public input. Correspondence is four point one.
So we have one additional uh piece of correspondence. It's from the county office of education, and it is the approve of our local education plan. I know it feels like a long time ago. We brought that in June, uh, but they spent the summer reading over it with a fine tooth comb, and uh, we're happy with the budget and the LCAP.
Four point two public comment. At this point in the agenda, the board welcomes comments on matters of district interest. Is there anyone who would like to speak now? Seeing none, we will move forward. Presentations, ASB.
So today we have with us a eighth grader, uh, his name is Thad Riddout. And Thad, what is your ASB office? Um, do you have an ASB office?
Yeah, I am eighth grade representative.
Great.
One of them.
Great, thank you. Go right ahead, yeah, go right ahead.
Alrighty, well, I'm Thad. I'm here to update you on things that we've been doing in ASB. Uh, the uh, first of all, the ASB held its annual retreat the day before the school started. It allowed us some time to connect with our team and create a loose calendar of events for the year, as well as put together our successful welcome back pep rally. Our theme this year is better together, and we took an in-depth look at how better together has pro- proven a winning strategy for us Falcons, whether it be in the classroom, on the playground, or on the court. Most of our ASB is also taking part in the leadership class offered through our enrichment and intervention program. We had our first spirit dress up day and created a class point tracking system to measure participation of each grade throughout the year. The fourth grade is currently in the lead with eighty-two percent of the class participating in the first dress up challenge. We are hosting our second annual car wash fundraiser as well this Sunday on September fourteenth from eleven to two on campus. The ASB will accept donations in return for a fantastic hand wash of your car. I look forward to seeing each and every one of you guys there. We also have the addition of a snack bar this year and dog treats because last year everyone brought their dogs to the car wash. In class, we are also preparing for our big red ribbon week uh activity, which is going to be held in the last week of October. We are brainstorming ideas regarding how us leaders can speak to other students about staying off drugs, off of drugs. We plan a lunch uh time activities and minute to win at games at recess to offer and promote healthy alternatives to drugs. We're also busy, busy, busy making celebratory team posters for all of our fall athletes. The student, the athletes uh love to see their names up in the gym and on the field because we love to honor their hard work. Next up, we are preparing for the Rock Your School Assembly and our Halloween themed fall dance. Thank you all for your time. See you at the car wash.
Are there, great, hold on one second, Thad. Are there any questions for Thad?
I had to do a flag football.
Oh, wait, what?
Didn't you do?
No, he wasn't at flag football.
Oh, I'm cross country.
Ryan, yes, he does cross country. Uh, Ryan Feld was going to join him if they got back, so we don't know. I haven't heard how they did, anyone? I haven't heard yet. Yes, it was up in Samago. Haven't heard yet, but.
What? We did.
I know. That's amazing. Thad, it's always impressive to see you, and I ha- I have to say, not to embarrass you, but I remember on your birthday when you were in fifth grade and your whole class came over and sang to you.
Yeah.
And I thought, this is so special, and I realize now that the special thing was you and that you bring joy to everybody and togetherness, so I'm just looking forward to this eighth grade year for you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright.
PTA.
Okay, um, I, I'm doing the PTA report, yes. Okay, I was like, okay, which one did we decide? Okay, um. Wait, you were, but you, it's, it's ASB and principal report, so before PTA, uh, it, that's why I was like, wait a second, yes. I'm sorry, um, if you notice on the agenda, it says ASB and principal report, so. Oh.
Yeah, yeah, presentations.
Yeah.
Five point one.
It might, remember how I told you the edits? I bet that was part of. Okay, we had, there was an, and, and for anyone listening, um, Board docs had some trouble uploading. You'll even notice like this odd thing that happens, which is a weird black square on here. So things that we saved and then it posted weren't saved. So there, that's why I emailed you guys about the two uh, that item, so that must have been also part of that weird upload, so. Yeah. Yeah. I think that's it. It's just that item I emailed all of you on.
If you won't, no, that's fine.
That has to be.
So sorry, I didn't mean to skip you.
Sorry, and back to our reg- regular programming.
Is this, this is working, right?
Yeah, weirdly yes.
Okay. Um, so state test scores have not been released publicly, but um, they should be released sometime in October. And um, we how, however, um, have been able to review them internally. Um, that's the benefit of the small school that we have. Jen and I um, hand put in all of the scores into a spreadsheet, so we have been able to look them over. And based on that data, we have identified some areas of focus that we're going to be targeting this year specifically in math. And so in order to do that, we've launched a new instructional tool being used this year in kindergarten through eighth grade, and it's called Next Gen Math. And so we're going to be using that this year to address some areas of growth and increase rigor in the classrooms. And so this is an online program that prioritizes essential standards, spirals through these standards, and also gives teachers some real-time progress reports. And it also allows them to um quickly customize lessons and assessments in order to um find those gaps and then address them quickly in the classroom. Uh, really, it's an instructional tool that allows them to uh, just i- identify these needs and then um take care of them rather quickly instead of waiting until that chapter test. So um, and then kindergarten through eighth grade is going to be implementing it. And so far, we have kindergarten through fifth grade onboard. They're already um using it, and um, middle school uh will be using it soon. Safety drills. So today we had our um shelter in place drill. We've had two safety drills already this year. We had a fire drill last week. Um, these drills are not shared publicly for safety reasons. Um, prior to the drill, we had teachers prepare the students for what to expect, um, and they explained the purpose of the drill. Um, just to make sure that the kids weren't, you know, worried or um anxious, so they knew exactly what to expect. The drill went very well. Everyone was calm and followed the procedures, and we were able to uh make sure that all the classroom doors and locks were properly. We looked for any areas of improvement, and after the drill, parents were notified of the drill to keep them updated and make sure they were aware of their child's participation in the drill today.
Yeah, I think one of the things we did uh that was unique to this drill is we did it during middle school lunch. And so it would be great if any emergency ever happened when every child is in every classroom, that teacher would hit the lock block and we call it a day. Uh, but we know that that's not how life works, and so we actually did it with all of the middle school out either eating um, or on the blacktop, and then um had them shelter in place in different areas that they were closest to. We had not done one like that in quite some time here. Um. Oh, yeah, and elementary was a movement in elective class, which is great because the classroom teachers in elementary have it pretty dialed in. Um, and that was good. Uh, I ran the, the gym. Were you with me in the gym? Yeah, so I ran the gym. Uh, it was, you know, a little exciting. We really wanted to make sure that kids weren't fearful of the drill, so there was a tiny bit of silliness in the beginning. But when given tasks, for example, uh, certain middle school students to enclose different doors, because the gym's large and there's lots of doors. They did an excellent job with that part. I went through and double-checked it, and we had all clear in two minutes and forty-four seconds, um, so that was good. Yeah, we do need to figure out a little bit tighter procedures on the lockdown in the main building. Partially because she was checking doors, I was running the gym. Um, so we need a little bit more distribution of who's doing the lock blocks to lock the main building. That was the big kind of oops uh that we had.
Good thing it's a drill.
But yeah, no, it was great. Yeah, that's why we do them. We learn and we grow from that. Yeah.
And next time, I won't wear these shoes when we do the drill. Any questions?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, take two, PTA.
Hi, great. So our PTA was, it was here earlier for our ribbon cutting on our playground. Um, and then they went home to take care of their families, so I was able to attend the first PTA meeting. Uh, their first project of the year is a community-based project, so as most of you know, we're having the hundred and fiftieth celebration of Cayucus. And they've asked different uh service clubs and agencies within the community to help put on that event because the chamber is only so big. Um, and PTA has taken over the kid zone that is happening on Saturday, and they have a ton of volunteers. In fact, they were able to double up people and get it covered. Uh, and that's great. And then they are breaking into committees for the fall carnival. Um, it is my understanding the fall carnival will take place slightly later in the day. It's conflicted for years with youth soccer, and a lot of our kids play youth soccer, so they're looking at kicking it up a little bit later in the afternoon on that Saturday. Thank you, the twenty-fifth. And that was the PTA report. They're doing a great job.
Alright, um, item six point one, regular meeting minutes from August approval.
Okay, if, when you're ready. I mean, stay as long as you want, but.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the uh meeting minutes from August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
All second.
Trustee Pewett.
Aye.
Trustee Castillo.
Aye.
Trustee Ross.
Aye.
Trustee Friend.
Aye.
Trustee Schuler.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Alright, information discussion, seven point one, board member reports. I'll go first. I don't really have anything to report because I wasn't here last month and it's we're just starting the school year, but I do look forward to our board's self-evaluation on the twenty-second.
Thank you.
Next.
Oh, I, I attended the safety committee meeting, and there's um a lot of excitement about safety. There was a lot of discussion about um, it's, it's time for um uh, fire extinguisher training ag- once again, and so there was a lot of discussion about um, fire blankets as well as um extinguishers.
Yeah.
And um apparently, I understand from the meeting that the teachers have been very good about requesting ladders and not using chairs to hang things up.
Good.
I don't think I really have anything. School-related. Um, I attended the CCAC meeting. That was nice. Um, some of the community members were excited about open gym.
Yes, we have dates.
But we have dates now?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll talk about it, yeah.
Okay, I told him to check on the website because it was both.
Yeah, we haven't put it out yet.
Okay.
That we're getting staffing for it, but I already have staff volunteers. I just haven't assigned which staff or which dates, yeah.
Oh, nice. And then the back to school night, I got to attend that. Kids are here, and it was wonderful. Really fast, very punctual on everything. Having two kids in different grades. Challenging, but making it everywhere, so it's good. Good turnout, pick a lot of parents and.
Next.
I did go back to the back to school night at World Bay. Uh, just because that's where my daughter is now, which is really fun to see how many Cayucus kids when they saw me walking around. So it's, it's very familiar.
That's great.
Alright, seven point two superintendent's report.
Okay, um, we are off and running. Um, we did start a new staff employee recognition um where we're doing monthly employee of the month, and really just the leadership team that meets weekly, looks at people who are going above and beyond. Our first two were Amy Connor. Um, Amy Connor stepped in and filled a spot in um, a need in a para educator role with such grace and dedication. It's been wonderful to see. And uh Sarah Johnson shifted from doing um partially math and the majority of math intervention the last few years to almost entirely middle school math. Um, moved rooms and it's created this positive atmosphere, helped new teachers get onboard with weekly grading practices, and it's just having an all-star year, so it's, it's wonderful to see. Um, and it really does uh warm our hearts, so that those were our August people. Um, we did have our first LCAP meeting. We'll talk about that later in the agenda. Um, probably the highlight over the last two and a half weeks was grandparents' day. As someone who was really close to their parent, parents, and then having my, my mother-in-law and my mom help when two people work in a family and help with our kids, um, it was a quick celebration at Flagpole, but uh hugely attended. In fact, we're gonna have to do two carafes full of coffee. Um, we did a little something different where we put the coffee and muffins out front to start as people gathered. Grandparents are quite punctual, it's not early. Um, so we had it all out there. We got to talk with the grandparents, then we moved into the Flagpole area, really got to honor them. Uh, the entire student body uh celebrated them, yelling thank you to them, and they just had a great time. Um, we estimated, it was hard to estimate because we did have a few parents there too because their student was being honored. Uh, but probably forty-five to fifty people.
Wow.
You know, it was, it was like, holy cow, but it was, it was really great.
That's neat.
Yeah, um, things coming up, uh, we are starting our Constitution Week next week. It is a California Department of Education mandated Constitution Week. Um, it is something we participate in. That means every grade level will be doing different conversations and activities related to the Constitution. The librarian will also be doing all of her books in that theme, and it's just, it, it's a good week to remember uh the founding aspects of our nation, and it's easy to think about all the things that go wrong. Um, but also to, to honor what uh our nation is formed on, and there are some really great things that are going right too, so. Um, anyway, I volunteer training is happening. People are chomping at the bit uh to come and volunteer. Another great problem to have, and so that'll be next week. And then last but not least, if anyone is in the area, um, October first, we're gonna do uh the first Java with Jen. Um, and we may do it at a local coffee place um versus at the school if it's open, so we'll either do it here at the school or down at a local coffee place. Uh, but we'll see. Either way, it's gonna be great because it's, it's just good to be in space with people to slow down and have conversations that aren't structured around, we're meeting because of this, A, B, and C, but just be in space with people uh and get to know them. Uh, we are checking in this week with all our new families, so I sent messages out to all new families. How are you doing? Here's what we're seeing. Is there anything else we can do? I believe, golly, we're not counting kindergarten and TK. Is it seven new families? It might be eight, uh, seven or eight new families. I have them highlighted out, um, maybe eight with the new kiddo that just started, so. Um, so just checking in because it's, it's, we have a lovely little school, but it's hard sometimes to break in because all of our kids have been together for so long, so making sure that we have people making friends. And that's it. Uh, no, I think we'll do the tasking, yeah.
Alright, seven point three LCAP.
Alright, um, so uh the LCAP, um, I am, I know Chris really wanted me to go over the full presentation.
Detail.
Um, but since, since I know if you watch the video, I'm not going to do that. So um included in the agenda item, there is a YouTube link. It's nine and a half minutes long, but it's the full presentation of the LCAP. So in the beginning is the basic elements of the LCAP related to why we have one. Um, I do want to take a moment to introduce our new LCAP committee. We have a wonderful committee of parents. Um, we have Kelsey Reynoso, who has two parent, our two children here. Grant Swanson, which is our middle school rep- representative for parents, which is awesome. Wendy White, Pat Hibbard, and Nicole Perry Hibbard, and then we have two teachers, uh, Joanne Montgomery and Sarah Brown. So we have a great team of people that, really great feedback around things they'd like to see. They felt very empowered that last year when we had, you know, seventy-seven percent of parents filling out the LCAP survey, that the first initiative that came in so highly uh ranked as something they wanted us to explore was gifted and talented programs. And we have a full calendar um of how we are diving into that. Uh, Lisa and Sean Anderson and I are the, the kind of the worker bees around presenting gate program ideas to elementary. And um, it's wonderful. It's the last few slides of this presentation. So in the month of August and September, it's all about research. We're researching tools to use to identify gate students. We're looking at typical grade levels. And we're looking at changes between uh referral base or full screening by grade level, which is my preference. Um, and it's just because I think sometimes uh gifted children um that fly under the radar. We don't want anyone not to be recognized because they don't have, you know, a um parent that's advocating for that, or maybe they're just kind of quiet in there, but they have a lot going on. And so we're just looking at all those aspects to develop the best program. Uh, we are going to start shortly uh in October. It looks like some advanced math in fourth and fifth grade, date-based math based on CAS or state testing scores, which Mr. Anderson will teach with those kids, uh, which I think will be really great. Um, and that's an area of need that's been identified really through our state data, and where we see kids start and kind of kind of dip a little, and then they kind of come back up, but we want to look at how we can keep that trajectory going, especially in the area of math. Um, but really, overall, it was fantastic. Our next meeting is November fourth, and I believe that's you and I, Chris, and any other board members who want to attend, but um, yeah, it'll be great. And it's just informational. There's nothing to approve on it. Yep.
Okay. Alright, seven point four, library committee follow-up.
Yeah, last meeting, we talked about the, the required California Department of Ed library report. And boy, I, I had told the board members, uh, it's really funny because they've, they've obviously hired someone who um is very good at monitoring that we've never seen before. So there is like a naughty list and a nice list of people who have turned in their library report and those who haven't. I mean, it's, it gets sent out to all the local a- agencies. I've actually never seen, it's quite entertaining because we, we're on the, we're on the nice list, so we're okay. But with that, there was a couple of data points that I wanted to make sure you guys saw. So um, our librarian was just returning, actually, last time we met, she was still on uh summer break, so here's the data. We had two thousand eight hundred and forty-one total circulation, so checkouts. Could be a repeated checkout, but checkouts. When you look at the grade levels, this is uh kind of the standing, fourth grade had six hundred and ninety-nine. So of the twenty-four kids in fourth grade last year, six hundred and ninety-nine checkouts, yeah. And third grade was just under that at five eighty-eight. Uh, then you had kindergarten at four forty-six. I really love to see that. And kindergarten was a small class last year too, with only fifteen kiddos, right? Sixteen kiddos, so that.
Fourteen.
Oh, sorry, fourteen. Okay, I was like, it was little.
Yeah.
Um, and this is what we want. We want to breathe this love of reading. We know that that is, it's gonna make good vocabulary, great imagination, critical thinking skills. It, it is the key for kids to be successful. Uh, then you continue to see um all the other grade levels. Obviously, we can all narrow in on where we need to work on this. It's TK. No, I'm just kidding. It's middle school, um, and really looking at that part of that is in um sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Embedded in uh Ms. Peterson's wonderful program is they do a lot of reading, and she has her own books. The kids have their own books that they bring for silent sustained reading, and they do novel studies throughout the years, multiple novels. So there is a lot of reading that's happening there, but there's not as much.
Um.
They want me to check it out. Checking out, so we'll see what happens. Um, I'm gonna have the librarian, Ms. Calhoun, really go into the classes and ask the middle school, what are the books you're looking for that we don't have? Is there things that would interest you, just to make sure we're not missing any?
Is it also maybe, out of curiosity, maybe kind of a cultural feeling that, you know, now that we're older, we, that's a little kid's library because there are so many pictures books? I mean, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
I remember when my children were um here in middle school, they were usually, for their free reading, they were usually finding books at home.
Yeah.
Or they would go down to the Cayucus library, which have really large YA.
Yeah, that's where I think we need to look at. Our YA selection is pretty large here. Um, we've made the library a little bit more like hangout feel, so we have kids in the library, middle school kids in the library every day.
Okay.
Every day, but we're not seeing that same circulation, but we're gonna ask them. Like, that's the beauty of having that age level is let's talk about it, let's figure it out, and they are doing a lot of reading in English already too. Um, uh, with that said, um, I just thought you might enjoy this. These are the most popular books that were checked out. Um, the book with no pictures is the number one circulated book. I was gonna bring it, but guess what? It's checked out. I was like, oh no, um, Spidey and his amazing friends were second, and that was just like this nod, I thought, to my brother who loved like superhero books, all of that. I love that. Then the next two, you're, or the next three, you're gonna be like, what? But there was in fourth grade, uh, they did a research study, and they checked books out at the library, and that's where you're gonna see I Survived Hurricane Katrina and I Survived the Nazi Invasion. These are the actual titles of the book, and then Monstrous Mammal, so uh those were the top ones checked out. Uh, last week at Flagpole, we honored the top three kids who checked out books last year, which was great, and then we'll honor three more next year. I know, I was like, why didn't I do this when Nora was here? Like, ah, she would have loved that. Well, she wouldn't have, but it would. You guys would have loved that, so. And that's the end of the um library committee report. I will say the Friends of the Library, um, you know, is it a sterile bay Friends of the Library?
It's just the whole library, yeah.
Or just?
The Central Coast.
Okay, so there's a Friends of the Library group, um, did meet with us. We're having a formal meeting next week, um, and they are looking at uh donating some funds for our book fair for every kiddo to buy a book.
Oh, wow.
Uh, which would be great, um, and they're just looking at like how that, the parameters around that, that, but they have a, a little chunk of money that they'd like to do that, which I think is great.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Alright, consent agenda.
Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All second.
Any further discussion?
Trustee Castillo.
Aye.
Trustee Ross.
Aye.
Trustee Friend.
Aye.
Trustee Schuler.
Aye.
Trustee Pewett.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Alright, action session, nine point one, review approved donation.
I'm making a motion.
Yes, there was, thank you. Oh, so um staff, thanks, uh, Donna Dawson. As you know, uh, she is a constant donator of funds. She came here with her daughter uh because she wants to make sure she delivers the check each time. Um, her funds go to anyone in the actual school program who might be struggling to pay the fees to have care while they're working. Um, and we um wholeheartedly accept the two hundred dollar donation and, and thank Donna.
I'll make a motion to approve the donations.
All second.
Any further discussion? Trustee Ross.
Aye.
Trustee Friend.
Aye.
Trustee Schuler. Trustee Pewett.
Aye.
Trustee Castillo.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Alright, nine point two, un-audited action.
Okay, so it's that time of year, our budget cycle, woo! So this is the very end of our Jenny's favorite time of year. Um, so this is the time of year where we're actually ending last year's budgetary cycle, the twenty-four, twenty-five year, and beginning as she closes, literally closes the books on this, our new cycle. Um, my favorite page is this lovely page here. It's three pages in, I believe. Um, because it's, it's, I love a one-pager. We'll talk through some of these major themes that you see within here. Um, and then we'll go from there. I, Gretchen asked me a wonderful question, which is. Um, and then we'll go from there. Uh, Gretchen asked me a wonderful question, which is, how close did you guys get? Because last year we were incredibly close with our prediction. Uh, we weren't as close this year. But I will tell you, we were not as close in a really positive way. So at the end of the last year, at the second interim, we had estimated that we would close the books at twenty-nine point nine percent. Um, which we clo- we are closing the books right now at thirty-four percent. So that means that's our reserve. It's our undesignated money um that we have to look for rainy days, positions, um, if they need be coming in placements in special education, um, negotiations, all of these other aspects. So when you see that thirty-four percent, it means that we've paid all of our bills, all of the salaries. We've closed all the accounts. If we had budgeted five thousand dollars account, uh, like for example in legal, uh, and paid nothing, that money fell out of the budget. So we had basically three hundred thousand dollars that came out of the budget in the positive. Um, so if we are going to have a variance of say four percent, we would always want it in the positive. Where you see that, I would ask you this. So I try to think about the questions, like where are the areas that the money fell out? Um, money fell out in legal, so we always budget uh ten thousand dollars in general legal fees, usually five thousand dollars in special education legal fees. And those were very minimal. Special education was zero. And um, the other legal fees was very minimal. I think it was less than a thousand. So right there is, you know, fourteen thousand dollars that fell out. That's a major shift. Um, I will say the year after, the first year I came, we were looking at thirty-four to forty thousand dollars in legal fees. Some of it because we were building, we were building that um extension, right? So there was some issues around the, the legal aspects of that. But we're seeing a good swing in that direction. I will say that when Jenny and I talk, you know, we're still going to budget that money. Because wh- as you guys know, one case uh is going to quickly absorb that ten or five thousand dollars. So we still have that budgeted. If we have another year like that, we might alter a little bit and, and see a slight reduction in that area. Another area is in special education. Uh, as the board is aware, we had a fairly expensive placement for a student in high need. Uh, they were able to uh go down a level and be closer to home and, and also a less expensive program. So there's some money that was put aside that would fell out of that account into the, in the positive. So that's where you see that adjustment. Um, this is the highest reserve we've had in the last four years. Um, but uh, the board knows, um, we've taken action. We are looking at hiring two paraprofessional positions. That's not in these type of accounts. So when Jenny and I meet and we do what's called the first interim, which is our next budgetary cycle, we'll make those adjustments, make sure all of those things are in there. It's going to give us a solid figure. Hopefully by then, we're settled by our bargaining units. But if there are raises that occur, those will all be projected into that. And we'll get a really solid number for this year. It will always uh, what, per board policy, be above that fifteen percent. Um, so that's kind of where you see all of these things happen.
The board policy is fifteen.
Yeah, it'll be above, well, fifteen percent or above. Yes, you got it. Um, Jenny has this, I think it's pretty cool in here. I'm going to point to it on this. It's hard to see, but it points to the bottom. Um, and this is because other districts do this. At first freaked me out. I was like, I'm sending her messages. But you'll see a number, this is the full reserve. You're actually going to see a number above that. It's really hard to see what it is. I believe it's nineteen percent. If you look at that, if you lines up, is that right, Lori? So the reason that's there is if the board policy is, then the reserve is uh fifteen percent. That's the difference. That nineteen percent is the difference between um the reserve that needs to be in place and the money that is not uh earmarked or placed in uh another area. So it gives you an idea of what that is. And it actually tells you what that amount is above the board required reserve. I think it's a great addition to the spreadsheet. Uh, so thank you, Jenny, for that.
Well, shouldn't it be titled differently? I mean, available reserve, available is thirty-four.
That's the total reserve.
Because we have to stay above fifteen.
No, believe me, at first when I was, she sent me the number, I went nineteen. Wait a second. And then she's like, no, and she even had put it in there. But I was so used to for years, looking at that bottom line number. That I, I just needed to slow down and look, process it. So, yep, you got it. Um, you'll notice that uh, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, so we're sitting at, it kind of peaks up a little bit. But again, we're, that's going to have an adjustment. So, so that'll have adjustment right at first interim. Because of the hopefully settled negotiations and then the two additional positions. So all of those things in place. There's a couple other things that occurred. Really quickly, Jenny, does this have that new state grant money in it? Or no? Okay. So there's going to be, uh, there is a new state grant uh that came in that I believe ours will be right about fifty. Thanks, fifty-two thousand dollars. Um, and it's for specialized program support. Um, so we'll be making a plan for those dollars. It was something they had kind of indicated to us, but they said, don't put it in your budget yet. So that's why we didn't. And now it actually came through. Um, so anyway, we'll get that really clear picture. Overall, the, the health of the district right now, uh, fiscally is very strong. Um, but I don't want anyone to be alarmed that we'll make those adjustments at first interim, which will be in October. And that's a very quickly here, in October. And then um, that will be really what we base our, hey, what is our next thing? Can we look at that van for athletics or whatever? Because we had that priority list. That was really the next thing on it. Um, it is an area of need. We're already with flag football going and volleyball and all the things happening. Um, may, it may be an opportunity for that. But we'll, we'll get all those other things settled first. Other questions? Jenny has all the answers. Yeah, the other question that sometimes comes is, is the red that it's across in the upper uh one-third. That's the contributions that occur. So that's when you have um, the, the unkind word for it would be in a program that encroaches on the general fund. Um, that's usually going to be your contribution to special education. Uh, because it's not funded to the level, right? Uh, that would pay for everything, special education, cafeteria, and sometimes transportation are the bigs. Yeah, and, and ours really are cafeteria and special education. Um, but you'll see that kind of those fluxes a little bit. Great, all right. Well, uh, let me know if there's any additional questions. And I look forward to the first interim. I think it's going to give us a really good picture.
I recommend we accept the, or approve the un-audited action.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Trustee Friend. Trustee Schuler. Trustee Puat. Trustee Castillo. Trustee Ross. Motion passes five zero.
Right, nine three, review approved resolution twenty-four, sorry, twenty-five oh four for adopting the GAN.
We love the GAN limit. The GAN limit um is a constitutional spending gap in California created by Proposition Four in nineteen seventy-nine for school districts to set its maximum amount of tax revenue. The reason why the GAN limit doesn't become as important for us is because you're looking at a basic aid or community-funded district. So in this area, it sets the maximum amount of tax revenue that can be appropriated and spent each year on a formula that was based in the nineteen seventy-eight and seventy-nine year. It's still to this day is that GAN limit. Uh, there has been a lot of movement on adjusting that GAN limit, but the budgetary factors of that make it a kind of Herculean task to do. Because you know, like, where is them? It's kind of like when you look at any proposition like Prop ninety-eight, rewriting a Prop ninety-eight, but what will it do if, like, those unintended consequences? Districts, um, so in this area, the seventy-eight, seventy-nine spending limits, then they adjust for annual changes of student attendance and cost of living. So basically, they have this spending limit and say, great, but you have two hundred more kids that are coming. And we have a COLA. So as that grows each year, this is now your spending limit. But it gives that baseline to grow on. Districts receive today far more revenue than the GAN limit allows because of Prop ninety-eight. So there's a big uh, a, a larger flood of money that comes in. And for most district, districts, the local control funding model or the LCAP. In our case, the LCAP doesn't give us a significant amount of dollars. It gives us a hundred and thirty-three thousand to a hundred and thirty-six thousand a year. That's solely because we have a small populations of student, students, and then a smaller percentage of what's called unduplicated students, students who are foster, English learners, or um free and reduced lunch. So that's why we don't get this huge amount uh or flex, flexing of money that comes there. Um, so each year, if there was this uh big, huge part of the GAN limit, then that's where we fill out the form of the GAN li- limit. We look at the excess funds and we turn it into the state because it's required by the state each and every year. So staff recommends approval of the GAN limit uh as it is required by the California Department of Ed. And um, looks forward to not presenting on it until next year.
I make a motion that we approve the um GAN limit for twenty twenty-six.
Any further discussion? Trustee Schuler. Trustee Puat. Trustee Castillo. Trustee Ross. Trustee Friend.
Uh, but doesn't it say twenty-four, twenty-five, not twenty-five, twenty-six?
It's for last year. Right, is that correct, Jenny?
Okay, so I need to amend my.
She said twenty-five, twenty-six.
I did say twenty-five, twenty-six, so um. Oh, I can't read it. I'm really apologize. I shouldn't have done this.
Right here on the bottom, it says.
I can't read it.
It does say twenty-five, twenty-six on the bottom.
I think you're looking at the uh resolution number is twenty-five, twenty-four.
Okay, I, I will amend my motion to say that we approved resolution twenty-five or twenty, twenty-five dash oh four.
And the second was, are you okay with that amendment?
I'm continuing to approve.
Oh, great, thank you. Any further discussion? Trustee Puat. Trustee Castillo. Trustee Ross. Trustee Friend. Trustee Schuler. Motion passes.
You read my document before I could be certain.
Oh, I see. I was just looking at this right here.
Oh, yeah. It says in the resolution, uh, the board doesn't uh provide public notice the attached constitutions documents for the land, the GAN limits for the twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal years of a decrease of, and it has it for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. So it sounds like it's going to have to seem kind of a little bit of both.
Oh, we're good.
I call it resolution number, we're good to go.
Nine four. All right, we've made it. Nine four, twenty-five, twenty-six, substitute teacher rate increase.
So, um, if there was an issue in Kayuka's school, um, it is that we have very few substitute teachers. Um, and unfortunately, you know, life doesn't always perfectly plan for teachers from August through June. Um, or their children get sick, or they get sick. And um, right now, we really have two regular substitutes and then one possible one that sometimes comes. It makes it quite difficult. Um, so uh, I did a study. You guys know I like to study things, yes. And you'll see all of that in the agenda item um from our colleagues. Right now, San Luis Coastal is paying one seventy-five. Um, and CMR is paying one seventy-five, Paso Robles two hundred, Atascadero two hundred, Templeton two hundred, Coast is at one eighty, San Miguel is at two hundred, Shandon is at two hundred, and also paneling mileage. And then uh County Office of Ed, just down the road, is also at two hundred. So because we don't have high frequency in substitutes, it's, I think, important to make us extra competitive. Because what will happen is this is like, gosh, you know, currently um, we pay one seventy-five. It's the same rate as San Luis Coastal right down the way. But San Luis Coastal, if you're a sub, you can get called every day. Here, you might get called once a month. We want people to say, you know what? It's worth it to me to apply to Kayuka's and be a sub in their calls because I'm going to get two hundred and twenty-five dollars a day. Or I'm going to get two hundred dollars a day. So we're trying to entice more substitutes by um paying more money. Um, we have, we have credentialed subs, so retirees or people who are credentialed teachers who don't uh teach full-time. They would be at two twenty-five a day. All other substitutes, just a regular sub, would be at two hundred. And then long-term substitutes, so anyone at five days, consecutive five days or more, would be at two fifty. The reason why that happens is if you're in that class that long, you're doing communication and grading and all of those things. Um, so we see that being a, a significantly higher amount. So we'd like to do that and be more competitive and hopefully recruit some more substitutes. Do I think this amount is enough? I don't know. I hope so. It's a good salary. I mean, it's, it's pretty strong, but at least it puts us in the, the ballpark and we can push that advertising. We'll push it hard between now and the next board meeting. I can let you know uh where we're at if we agree upon that. If we're getting a little, catching a little fish with our line.
And if I recall it, it's going to cost us about thirty-five hundred dollars for the year based on CAS.
Yeah, yeah, you got it. Yep. So when we looked at the average number of substitutes we had, the increase of this, we'd see about a three thousand or so dollar increase uh annually.
Thirty-seven.
Yeah, thirty-seven.
I mean, I'll make a motion to approve the uh substitute teacher rate increase.
I'll second.
Yeah, I would suggest even like upping it to two fifty a day for credentialed and like two twenty-five for, because we are out of San Luis coastal area and it's a drive. Like, I'm thinking as myself, if I was to go some, somewhere, I was like, well, okay, with twenty-five bucks, we'd pay for my gas or.
Um, set the agenda with the board president. She's like, you sure that's enough? And I said, I don't know. Like, I don't, I, I, and I, I mean, I'm not against that. Um.
Should I revisit this in a month? No, because the need for subs is, oh.
Is now. And I see like, I know, like Cal Poly back in session, like those living in San Luis, like what would make them want to drive to Kayuka's rather than subbing at one of the, what is it, five, six, I don't know, schools in San, Slow County? Like, not city. Get some, maybe fresh faces.
People you're calling. You have to call a lot of people to get.
I don't have many to call. Before, yeah, well, yes. And before, we had two, we have two of our instructional assistants that have credential. And I was able to rely on them a lot last year. But this year, they've taken on long-term setting roles with us and things like that. So I haven't been able to pull that. So it makes it more dire for this year to get a larger pool. But yeah, I'd say two and a half or that's how many people I can call.
And I think like at the.
So that would be Lisa or myself, or pulling our special ed teacher to, to man a class or. Our librarian. Yeah, our librarian. I mean, like, so it's not like, it can be, classes don't, so no worries. Like, we always find a way, but it just.
It would be nice, but it'd be nice to not have to scramble.
Yeah, and once people start subbing here, like, they stay with us unless they get a full-time job. So the two we have only, like, they, they would prefer to sub with us, right? But we just don't have enough jobs all the time for them. Um, but our, the one we've lost subs, it's because they've gone, they've gotten full-time jobs. So that makes sense, you know.
Because it is some effort to put in an app and apply to be a sub and do all that.
So we have a first and a second. Um, the discussion is, would we like to update, update the amounts? But so instead of two twenty-five, two hundred and two fifty, I'm imagining it would go two fifty, two twenty-five, two seventy-five.
Do you think that'll help?
I, I mean, I think two fifty is a strong number um for a credentialed teacher or a retiree to come in. I mean, that's great. Um, two twenty-five, yeah.
I, I like those numbers, two fifty, two twenty-five, and two seventy-five.
So we'll probably need to, let's, if that's, depending on where you guys are, we could always vote down the motion that's out and then accept a new motion. Um, or we can pick where it is, try it for a month and then let you know.
Can't you, can't we amend the motion?
As long as the second agrees, which was Chris and then Carrie.
So I amend it? Okay, um, I'll make a motion that.
Remand the motion.
I'll amend the motion to increase those rates by twenty-five dollars uh per day each. So two fifty, two twenty-five, and two seventy-five.
I second again.
Any further, further discussion? Trustee Castillo. Trustee Ross.
I.
Trustee Friend. Trustee Schuler. Trustee Puat. Motion passes five zero.
All right, ten one, studies, um, review of action items. Ten one is the study session board evaluation on September twenty-second. That's a Monday, correct?
And then time is five to seven, not our normal six o'clock.
So was it, why is everyone looking down?
I was just re, like doing some math in my head.
Some of the unauthorized actuals are personnel doc, it's not.
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be here.
You're not gonna.
I'm gonna be out of the country. For what? Italy.
Um what about you, Dan and Pete?
Second. I'm probably, I should be okay.
That's not committing.
But I'm feeling.
We agreed on this a long time ago.
Why can't?
I I will be here. I just request everything to be an extra-large print.
Bring a magnetized.
Yes, no, we have, we actually do that for a student on campus, so we can totally do that.
Might be fine by then, so.
It's no problem.
If, wait a minute, if not everybody can come, if it's a board self-evaluation, that's not effective.
That's a Monday, the twenty-second.
Everybody can come.
You you cannot come?
No, I said, I was just rechecking it.
Oh.
Unless I get called in and stay in jury duty, I should be.
I'm good.
So what do you guys, I mean, I kinda feel for a board evaluation, we need everybody.
Unless we fill it, I mean, unless you send out the eval form.
Do we have a form?
Yeah, that's right. We decided upon it, yeah.
Able and come back to a different team?
Yes, you do.
Can you table it till Chris gets back?
It's okay.
When are you leaving? So, well, if.
I come back like on the twenty-fifth.
Um to, can we push it back a week? What would that be?
The twenty-ninth?
I don't have my calendar. I mean, I don't have everything on my phone.
Twenty-ninth is fine with me. Mondays, I'm here. Most Mondays.
Yeah, I can be here.
My night?
Do we name?
I don't have my calendar, I guess. I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't put stuff on, but that should be fine. I usually don't do things at night.
So because it's an agenda, we said it on the board calendar, we wouldn't need to change it here. Like we can't, you know, like.
Right, you gotta amend it.
Cause remember we had that one meeting like two and a half years ago, we had to change it.
Right.
That's a lot of work.
Have a meeting to change a meeting. What about you, Dan? How's the twenty-ninth? Is the twenty-second better or the twenty-ninth for you?
Uh I think they're both the same.
Okay.
Twenty-ninth? I'll make a motion that we change the uh board self-evaluation meeting from September twenty-second to the twenty-ninth, and that at times to stay the same.
Creek. That's good. Alright, would you like us to send the evaluation?
Wait, we need a second and.
Oh, we're sorry. I'm already moving.
I'll second it.
Guys. Any further discussion? Trustee Ross.
Hi.
Trustee Fred.
Hi.
Trustee Schuler.
Hi.
Trustee Puat.
Hi.
Trustee Castillo.
Alright.
Motion passes five zero.
So when is the, so there's a um questionnaire that comes out ahead of time. When is that gonna get sent out?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. So um we can send that out to you guys uh tomorrow. I mean, it's ready to go, so we'll send it to everyone tomorrow. Um you'll just have from tomorrow until the twenty, twenty-ninth to drop your notes, to fill it out. Um and then it'll expedite obviously the process as we look at. Uh unless you'd like us to have you guys turn it in and calculate it and get average score, so you can compare your score to the board's average score. That would be nice.
That would make sense. What do you guys think?
That would, I think that would make sense. So like, let's say on standard line of whatever, community engagement, I'm just, you know, winging it. But community engagement, Pete gives it a three, it's out of a bias scale, Pete gives it a three. Um we'll get an average score for everywhere, and then if say the average score is three-point-two, Pete's like, cool, that's actually kind of where I thought we were. Versus Pete gives it a five, the rest of the people give it a two, then Pete's like, let's, let's get kind of weird. Then if we're right aligned, then we won't have a lot of discussion about it. We can move forward, and then we'll find our areas of growth. Uh and uh.
How much time, if we turn them in, how much time would you guys need to?
What, what are we turning in by the twenty-second and then?
Gotta get on it.
I'll get right on it. Send it. When do you? Well, I'm leaving Friday.
This Friday?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll also send it to you tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll bring it tomorrow. Perfect. Yeah, there you go.
Perfect.
You'll probably not be able to sleep in anticipation of. Uh in addition, I did send a survey out to all board members on their emails about board professional development.
Did it?
I have three out of the five of you that have completed it. I have four, so I know yours is one, so.
You send on the school, uh school email?
Mm-hmm.
When'd you send that?
Friday, it's Thursday.
Last week. I can resend the link too, yes. About the annual conference, the small school district or post. What you're interested in.
Uh yeah, if you could resend.
I'll resend.
Was deleting a bunch.
I did mine.
I know, I don't know, I forgot to collect emails, so I'm like randomly guessing who did it or not. Had a feeling. Just trying to make people blink. It's Pete, he didn't do it. Good. You should be a school principal, that's. Who did? Stare him down.
I didn't see it.
Um, okay. Uh future other tasking is, we did, we put out chess staff on open gym dates. We are looking at Wednesdays. It actually frees up the gym because right now, as we guys know, we have three levels of volleyball, so the practices go a little bit later. Um when it's on an early out, on early out, say, practice earlier, so we can have the gym time for the community. Um we will send it out to the board members. Uh we have them going until basketball. Once the basketball so, the schedule gets solidified on when home games are and basketball, we'll set the other part of the year. So we just, it only goes to like uh November because of that. But we are looking at Wednesdays, and we do have staff that has uh volunteered to be paid to man it. Yeah. No, not at all. Alright, great. I don't think there's, is there anything else on future agenda items? I mean, I know you're looking forward to the first uh interim, but other than that. Oh, we do have teachers who's all signed up to do presentations too. Our new teacher, our, both of our new teachers will be presenting to the board this school year, so you'll get to meet them, which I think will be great.
Yeah.
I say, will the volleyball net be up during the open gym?
No.
No.
No. Why do you want it up?
Yeah.
Oh.
Why? Cause I know like in the past, like do like basketball or something like that, but I know like for me, like during volleyball season, like you saw Amelie and I out here on the black.
Um.
On the black type, I've seen like.
Would be playing basketball and volleyball at the same time, cause of the, the just nature of volleyball is gonna be flying in, like it's one or the other.
Yeah.
Um the only exception of that would be if we put up the uh PE volleyball net. Don't we have a a half-court volleyball PE? Oh yeah, we put that one up for volley, like so then people could play volleyball on one side and then basketball would be the other side of the gym. That could be an option. But we just have to either decide like open gym volleyball. I mean, it's easier for us just to leave the volleyball net up and not play basketball, but that doesn't seem to be what the community wanted basketball. Yeah.
At all times.
The half?
Well, no, I mean, like split it like maybe one month, it's volleyball, one month, it's basketball, like rotate it, since there's not. I don't know, would that work for the community?
Well, the only thing is, is the people manning the the gym, if everybody come, if people come to open gym and play basketball and the volleyball net is up, they're not gonna be able to, cause it's, we're like, take down the net. It's just not as easy as what you think because of like the posts and the tightness and like it's so stat, like those staff members aren't gonna be able to, so whatever we decide is, we can advertise it as it's open gym volleyball night or it's open gym, open gym basketball.
Have you gotten a lot of calls about that?
Basketball.
That's helpful.
Yeah. But that's be, I mean, that's could just be because that's what we've had too. I'm not saying there's not a need or desire.
A lot of basketball. I didn't know if there's volleyball in there too. There's volleyball in there, maybe we make one night. It's kind of tough to have. You can play two-on-two for basketball stuff.
It's. Spotlight's outside.
Alright, anything else? Are we, are we debating that still or?
I just don't know what the solution is yet. I'm just thinking it through. I think the solution will be to do a half-court um volleyball and half-court basketball, and then if we find that everyone comes for one or the other, then the next open gym could be that, you know? I don't know. I think that'd be fine, and then nobody's unhappy, cause there's basketball and volleyball happening.
It's bring your, you you bring your own vault.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's just nice to play inside though, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Bring roller skates.
Alright, uh we'll start the first one off half and half and then see what happens.
Alrighty. We are adjourned.
Thank you.